I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on its own under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Salamaka City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Buckeyes. The people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people, and whose ancestral and modern day land, Salamaka School District now stand and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaka City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
Thank you everyone. Welcome. China, Japan, South. Just as a note, our board members will be able to have the excuse tonight. And joining us will be the doctor.
She is not, she's in transit from Congress.
So Karen was also excluded.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, since the agenda was published last Friday, we have attached the instructional coach PowerPoint. We have attached the midyear attendance report. We deleted a leave of absence for Joseph Pandora due to date revision. And we also deleted what was initially on there as a trap coach for Mr. Schnocker. The paperwork is back great and you will see that back on the agenda February fifteenth.
All right. Then we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Terry, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor, or I oppose, abstain, motion here. First, we have our presentation for instructional coaches, so.
All right, Dr. P, do you want to introduce them, or would you like me to?
Sure. Sure. These are our instructional coaches. We have an ELA and a math coach in each of the buildings. And we have one science instructional coach. And we also now have Mrs. Katie Snyder, who is our tech coach. And we had the very fortunate experience of attending a conference in Orlando. It was called the Teaching Learning Conference for all instructional coaches across the nation. There were even people there from Australia. We really got to collaborate with lots of colleagues all over the world and I can honestly say as an educator, I took back more from that conference than I've taken back in a very long time. We've been able to talk and implement some really important stuff, so across the district. So our instructional coaches, we thought that what we would do is put together a presentation to show you all we learned and and our plans for implementation. So take it away, coaches.
Thanks. Okay, so like Dr. Poncello said, we went to a TLC instructional coaching conference. And we just wanted to thank all of you for allowing us to go there. And we really did learn a lot. And that's why we wanted to present today to just kind of share with you just some takeaways from that conference. So like she said, there are two instructional coaches at each building. So I'm Kelly Clarko. I'm pre-K to three math in at Prospect. Carrie Peters, I'm high school math.
I'm Erin Anastasia. I'm Seneca math.
Cheryl Johnson, I'm Katie, pre-K through twelve, science and STEM.
I'm Becky Nannan. I am now only high school ELA.
Alicia Long, Prospect ELA.
And Katie, I don't think she's on our list, but Katie is our new coach for for all things IP.
And Mary Cornacki is not here, but she is the coach at Seneca for ELA.
All right, so our conference was actually back in October and it was put on by Jim Knight, who's a renowned instructional coaching expert. He's written several books. So we got into reading the coaching cycle that he wrote and from that we were like, oh, there's this conference. You guys let us go and it was great. We got to meet him. He had several sessions that we got to go to. So it was three days that focused on instructional coaching, which I've been doing it for a while. And it was the first experience I had to be able to have so much information on instructional coaching and to be surrounded by just instructional coaches from all over the country and like Dr. Poncello said, across the world. But anyways, the sessions focused on building relationships, like learning how to build relationships with your coworkers in this role versus being a teacher. It also talked about teaching adult learners versus children because it is a very important avenue and implementing coaching cycles, which we're going to touch base on just a little bit. And we also went to sessions that taught us ways to study how a district can utilize coaches to their fullest protectance to help with instructions. So we're gonna take it away and give you a little more information on that.
So of course, anytime you do something that like this, you want to evaluate your own program and come up with a vision. So we came back, we talked about all we learned and we created a vision. The Salamaka School District Coaching Staff Envisions Program in which instructional art coaches partner with teachers and school leaders to build educators capacity, ultimately improving student achievement. So that is before. But in doing so, how do we support teachers and administrators to do that? So to achieve this vision, we really did talk, as Kelly said, about relationships and working side by side with educators. Our educators bring a lot to the table. They have a lot of knowledge through all the PD that we already provide. So we want to create this confidential partnership with them that makes it easier for them to implement and follow through on all this PD that they're learning. So we can support them in many ways as we do this side by side with them. We can work on curriculum and content and building their understanding of that. Instruction, how do you deliver? The instruction that you do daily, looking at data, what improvements are we seeing? Thinking about how do we organize and manage and create a classroom culture that's conducive to learning? Other professional learnings, there's just so much. We can also partner with them to find resources to help support what it is that they feel that they need to work on and improve.
So as we mentioned, we learned more, a little bit more about coaching cycles from the author of Coaching Cycles, Jim Knight, while we were at our conference. A coaching cycle involves partnering with teachers confidentially to collaborate to allow us to engage them in conversations that provide them opportunities to be reflective in their own practices. And from that reflection, being able to set goals that will directly impact student achievement in their classrooms. Why a coaching cycle? Coaching cycles empower teachers to reflect on their practices and make those instructional decisions that will impact their student learning. And essentially, it's the embodiment of professional learning for a teacher.
So we also learned about what some of our roles are. And it's really important that we know what our role is, but also to know what our role isn't. And so, I mean, you can see the list on there. Really, we're there to be the biggest cheerleaders for our teachers to give them that support when they're feeling frustrated. What we are not, we are not administrators. We do not go in to evaluate them. And it's been really important and it's been a real, not a challenge for us, but a focus for us to make sure that our teachers know we're not here to evaluate you. We're here to help you, help you question what you're doing and let you come up with those answers. So it's these reflective practices. It's having the teacher, encouraging the teachers to maybe videotape a lesson. If you don't want us to see it, that's fine. We can walk you through a series of questions that will let you evaluate your own teaching step up. So as a result of all the learning that was had, we have an action plan. And we've already started our work on this action plan and we all look forward to working with more teachers throughout the rest of this year, over the summer and in the years to come.
And so our bottom line really is that the goal of our instructional coaching program is to empower, equip, educate, and engage teachers. We want them to be able to make an impact in the instructional and school improvement goals. And that's really what we're here to do is to support teachers and all school personnel in every single way we can.
We really appreciated the opportunity to go. It was a great experience.
Thank you. Definitely the best that I have.
Do you have any specific questions for us?
I don't. How often do you meet with teachers? Kelly, give us an example.
It depends on the teacher because they should be coming to us. We're not supposed to go, you know. One thing they said at the conference is not to just show up in their room and be like, hi, I'm here to help you. So you kind of wait for them, but I had teachers come and we set up times to meet during their planning. So maybe once a week, it might be every other week because the other thing is you have to be careful not to show up their planning time. So it becomes a very tricky situation with them. But teachers that are willing and want to really work on something, they're willing to meet me once a week. It just depends on the teacher and what their need is too. So like a younger teacher, a brand new teacher, I might meet with them once a week. I might go in their room and watch some things. An older teacher, like I'm working on some strategies with a second grade teacher once a week, every other week, depending on what we want. So it depends on what they.
So you said that you're waiting for them to come to you, kind of? How long do you wait? What if a teacher hasn't reached out in two months? What are you doing?
Well, there is the tricky thing and that's why we have to work with our admin in the building to be like, hey, if they come to us and say, hey, I've spoken to so and so and I want you to go in and talk to them. But again, that becomes an evaluative thing on my part. If I'm thinking that they're struggling and I just show up and be like, hey, you know, like it's a, it's a fine line to walk because it also plans them up to like you're here to evaluate me. Would you think something's wrong? So it is something we need to work out.
Yeah. One of the things I think to answer part of your question is we also just chat with our teachers daily. So we don't necessarily say, hey, I'm here to help. But we have conversations with them all the time. We're walking through the halls. I'm jumping into the high school teachers' classroom saying, hey, how are you doing? Is there anything I can do to be helpful today? Sometimes they say no. Sometimes they say absolutely. I've been meaning to ask you something and then we have that conversation.
And at Seneca, we meet with teachers once a month as a whole grade level. So I'll meet with all the math teachers once a month. And Nikki's figured out a way to schedule it so that we have extended time with them of an hour and a half to two hours in which we can plan. And that often leads to teachers inviting me in to model a lesson or co-teach a lesson with them and then have reflection afterwards.
And I'm finding this sciences, I have a lot of teachers saying, I want to do an activity that has to do with the food web. Do you have the time to hunt around and come to me with like two or three activities? And then they can pick and choose. I'm also working with a couple of different grade levels, going through their curriculum, going through teaching some lessons and giving them time to play with the manipulatives. So as far as like how often our sixth grade teachers, I'm meeting with them once or twice a month.
Well, right now I need other great, every weekend strategies for math and they're loving.
And our high school social studies teachers are using that steam space a lot. They're enjoying using a lot of the one set activities.
Right. Yeah, guys, just on the chairman, I've been witness to some of the PD that they've offered. And you watch that PD explode across the department and the utilization of coaches increased through that. So that's a wonderful thing that they're able to do in-house, which is pretty incredible.
Okay, I have a follow-up question. So something's like we got a little bit of contradiction because Kelly, you mentioned that the conference told you not to intrude on teachers' time. What does our admin say? Dr. Poncello, where do we go with this?
So it's a dance, Mr. John. It's most definitely a dance. When, when teachers are feeling stressed because they need that planning time to get ready for their, you know, to develop their lessons, I guess we have to be careful when we meet. So I think our instructional coaches are very much open to what times that teachers feel more comfortable meeting. I know some meet before school, some meet, have a working lunch. Some are okay with doing it on their planning time. In the high school, there's a little bit more leeway, so they'll swap out a planning time. And some want to meet after school. I've actually been in some of these sessions that meet after school. So I would say it's a dance to make sure you meet teachers in a place they're comfortable to receive that support. As far as professional development goes, the model of the past and, and present as well has usually been, we go to this wonderful professional development and we bring back this, these materials and these new concepts. And it's up to us alone to implement them. Well, now our teachers across the district have assistance. They actually have a support. I went to this great PD and I got all this stuff, but I need help with implementation. That starts a coaching cycle. So they usually, in the past, I've known that stuff to sit on a desk or in a corner because the teacher's so involved in other things. And trying to implement that while they're teaching and on and the, and life goes on, becomes difficult. And these are actually instructional assistants, instructional coaches that will help them bring ongoing PD. Not just that one thing. They'll go to that one professional learning experience and then they'll bring it back. And then they have a coach to support them in not only implementation, but effective implementation. So this is really an exciting, ongoing PD experience. And if you look at our team here, they are approachable. One of the things they said was we've all learned what not to do. And we brought our principals on board because a lot of times as people who want to share knowledge, we're teachers, we want to share, we realize that everything that we learned how to do, just share everything. They told us, put your advice monster away. And we all sat there and went, oh, okay. So we wound up learning how to be a support rather than advice givers. So it's been a wonderful learning experience to develop that coaching. They called it confidential. A confidential partnership and that trust, that trusting relationship between our coaches and our teachers. And I see it happening right before my eyes. So I'm really excited to work with these people to continue finding our way in, finding our way into classrooms more and more. That's our piece. Student engagement and now instructional coaches, it's teacher engagement. So that's our ongoing work.
All right, one more. So if teachers aren't coming to you, let's just say you have downtime. You all were teachers in classroom at one point. Do you still interact with students?
Oh, yeah.
So you'll work with students on whatever ELA math.
Individually.
So is that more spontaneous or is it structured? Do you have certain students?
Either way, like I knew that second grade was struggling with a couple of the classrooms with some of their students. So every day for math, I push in, settle with the kids and work with them every day. So you know, so yeah, absolutely. It's always good to get the kids. Yeah, yeah, yes.
I think it's important, what you heard about was the coaching cycle and how that works. But our instructional coaches perform a wide range of tasks throughout the day. So could you guys just touch base on like, what's an average day? Because one of the questions was, you know, how much, how much are you working with teachers? How often do you see teachers? And it sort of sounded like, okay, I might see three or four teachers a week and the rest of my time sitting around.
That's not really actually accurate. So I might get my start out with a team meeting at like seven fifty to eight twenty, thirty, and then I might take, go into a classroom for math instruction. Because a lot of the math instruction at Prospect happens in the morning, like half in the morning, half in the afternoon. And then I might touch base with a teacher during a day, like when I talk to one of our new teachers, you know, how are we doing with those back Lucy toolkits? So it's like your day just gets unfolded and I prepare stuff for Laura that we're going to have a meeting. So it's like a lot of different things. I keep track of the data because I know that they gave a quiz. So I know we have a meeting coming up. I need to get ready for that. So there's a lot of different things, but I, I see the teachers all day long and the kids.
So I think in addition to the coaching formal cycle, which is what the conference was, if they went to, they, they fill in where needed. Many times I think you'll identify areas or classrooms that might need help. You also are many historically are called, our coaches have sort of been the content experts when it comes to say a new reading series. So with Sabas, right? I mean, I have leaded. In addition to your coaching cycles, you're also doing some work with professional development throughout the day and assisting with the implementation of that as well. So we're very fortunate to have a number of coaches and their expertise. And in addition to that formal coaching cycle that they kind of went to the captain's house, there are a whole wide range of tasks that they do to support them. Sometimes I have to believe that our educators, when they might observe a teacher or see a teacher either through a formal process or an informal process of observation, may see an area where they might need some assistance, maybe with classroom management or whatnot. And their role as a building principal isn't necessarily to say you need to be doing this. We have the resources where they can say, you know, you might want to talk to Mrs. Clarko about small group instruction and mathematics and how you can better utilize manipulatives to meet your learning objectives. And that can prompt the teacher, you know, to have some direction. And then it's more collegial and with one professional learning from another professional.
Nikki, are you getting mad?
Yeah, I mean, we need the professional coaches by weekly. So it's kind of backwards to mine. I like what Dr. Poncello said about teacher engagement. We have a goal that is, let's say, building these classrooms within math. We want all of our teachers to be utilizing strategy and building classes in their math instruction. So when we have a team meeting, we would come in, we would all be together. Erin might come in and have a conversation with the teachers on what this will look like and how she supports them. We will make data together. We have good conversations. And then when Erin and I go in and do observations, if we notice something, we go and come into relationship with the teachers again with Erin. And then you say, that's what Dr. Wheeler said, like, you really need to meet with Erin on X, Y, and Z. And there's follow-up cycle. The coaches, Marion and Erin are at Seneca, have the same vision that Erin and I would have. I'm like, what we want to end both be in the practice. Very collaborative. Teachers are a part of that. You asked a question about like, when do the administrative stuff, and if they need to be there. Anytime. I think if we go into classroom and the expectations of what we want to see is not happening, then we would ask, and it's not ever like punitive or any fun doubt. We have that collaborative link. This is identifying the big bull that you want them to be in the different ways, making sure they score or day. Or remember, I mean, I have a couple returning this to my building and Erin is never telling me something.
I do the lesson planning for math and I go in almost every day to make sure that there's continuity.
I can add one more thing. One of the most tangible things, one of the very tangible things I've seen, you asked for an example. Elementary school teachers in particular have to teach everything. And every teacher has a comfort level either with ELA, with math, with science. And they also have like a not so comfort level with some of those subjects. And it has been an absolute dream to watch Mrs. Johnson, just for one, who loves science and her, her passion about science, when she goes into classrooms because she's approachable, because she loves it and she delivers instruction in science in in very appropriate ways and uses all the cool manipulatives and, and equipment that should be used. A teacher that may not be so apt to dive into a science class. It may be peripheral until they meet up with Mrs. Johnson, who will come in and model, bring them over to the steam room, introduce them to equipment that they might not have gotten in their coursework in, in college or in PDs along the way. So I love when our coaches in their own disciplines, math, ELA, science, and technology can go in and support a teacher in that one area or two areas that really need some expertise support. And it's ongoing and they're not afraid to ask, which that's what we're seeing growing. We're seeing more and more teachers from the elementary schools who have to teach everything want to call out to our instructional coaches and say, I really need help with this particular topic. It's a tough one. What are your suggestions? So those kinds of collaborative experiences and opportunities, just excellence in teaching, you know, plays out excellence in student achievement. So I see it as a win-win that the people in these disciplines are passionate about what they do and they could bring that passion to people that may feel a little apprehensive in some subject areas.
I want to jump in and just say that those kind of conversations that Dr. P is talking about tend to be time savers for teachers. Because the, Mrs. Johnson, for example, knows exactly what she's talking about. So the teachers don't have to go and research it themselves. So they can rely on her. They feel more comfortable teaching the content, knowing that it's coming from an expert. And then, then the instruction, they're not as great of it anymore. So definitely that's a major time saver for teachers and they're not as adverse to reaching out. Adverse wasn't the right word, but they're not as reluctant to reach out because they're afraid that they're going to lose time. They're not, they're saying.
We kind of filter through, yes, forth them.
Kim, are you getting mad?
People in front of you are relationship builders. And at the end of the day, that's what it is. Really, I mean, there's wonderful educators and our coaches are even better, really. I mean, truly. And I, I'm right next to Kelly and Alicia. Sorry, you're stopping me. I'm open at all the time at questions, collaborating. And I see teachers going in and out of that. So.
Next, we have our midyear attendance report from Mr. Robert.
I'll be firing that up. I wanted to first, you folks had to appoint me several months ago to this position and I just want to let you know that it is not exactly what I thought it was, but it is a true honor to be able to work with these students. This staff that's here and the parents and the community. I really am very impressed with everything that I've come across. So I really appreciate the opportunity to to do this. Thank you. Midyear is exactly what it says. A lot of what I just mentioned to you was because we rehashed a lot of the things that we have been doing up till now, which has been a lot of different avenues and a ton of different departments and a lot of different staff and community people and families. We're all trying to work toward the same goal and it truly does take a village to be found that and it is playing itself out every day. We are finding more and more people that are willing to be involved, that are interested in being involved. And I think that it's going to continue to evolve to a point that we're going to get to where we need to be. But currently, a couple of months in, I will just share with you and then we can we can do this again in the end of the year hopefully. We'll see where we are. I work with Bart Metzger. She has been doing very recently Prospect and Seneca. I do the high school. We're getting a lot of advisement. I'm just going to run through real quick. Basically, what I do, we do is maintain the attendance data for the district, which we submit to New York State, especially paying attention to chronic absenteeism, which is eighteen or plus days by the end of the year. Collaborate, meet monthly with all the students and their support staff. We have been trying to find the best pathways to do this, not only with me, but to include the counselors, the guidance folks. The liaisons have been very valuable to us. They really put the nuts and bolts of a lot of contacts with families. They have histories with them. They know a lot and have brought us an awful lot of information. So this is, it, it really is taking on a very productive life in my opinion and it's, it's looking well. We connect with and build lasting relationships with the students and their families. We do that in a number of ways, which we have opportunities to not email. Phone calls, which we do in the mornings. We put great, the students as they enter the building, which sounds like we're schmoozing. I get an awful lot out of that. I get, you know, we see the athletes from the basketball game the night before. We can talk to them. We can talk about baseball. Thing that happened, you know, the events that are going on, the kids that are involved in all of that. Um, we can relate. We can talk to them. It really. Has helped to uh let me know a lot more of the students here. There's a lot of students here. And uh it's taken me a little while, especially I went with all the seniors and then. They left. Lots more names to learn, but um we have a, we have a great. A great bunch of teams here, a great bunch of kids. But under the front office, whether it was secretaries and speak, already students, I kind of uh I elected to do that. Uh, to come and stand and watch the numbers as they come in in the morning and find out it's same kids, different kids. Uh reasoning. Potential barriers. You talk to them about it. It's something that maybe we can help with. Um. A lot of the kids, we shut the doors at seven fifty or seven forty-five, seven forty-sixish. Um, a couple of last few days, um when we've had snow issues and kept the doors open. Um, for a little while longer, it's it's been something where. Uh, the kids, just because of the weather or whatnot, we're finding that kids are are. Within three or four minutes uh being tardy when they're coming in. A lot of them are way more than that, but a lot of them are very close to getting around town. We're just trying to see if there's something that can be tweaked. A little barrier, a little five minute push in the morning that might make a huge difference in returning numbers. Then again, is, you know, uh meeting the kids where when they're coming in and finding out at the time, what exactly might be a potential something that we can as a school help with. Uh, we call families daily, not all of them, obviously. But we're trying to find out reasons, like I said, barriers, students' absences, electronically entering those calls into a daily record so that we have. Uh, we can trend. Not only through Power School, but also we keep a separate Excel spreadsheet. Uh, some of the things that happen over the course of the day, we can then enter into that. So we keep very close tabs on both of those. Good to have data, especially when it's accurate. Building relationships with the students and their families. I mentioned increasing daily communications. We're trying to figure out what works. We can now text. We, you know, if the family can't get back to us, we can, we can find somebody if they're more comfortable with the liaison. That person will then get in touch with that person. Sometimes they don't answer my calls. They'll talk to a liaison. Sometimes they won't talk to guidance, but they'll talk to me. We've been working back and forth with. Really developing a rapport. At the human level, finding out exactly what it is. Once you've done that, once you have a friendship, once you have a relationship with somebody. And they can open up to you, you can find out what the actual issues are. Some of them are tweaks, some of them are. In their minds, insurmountable, but either way. As a school system. We can offer them the assistance that they might need. We can tell them what's available here. What support systems we can have. A lot of times they don't know. A lot of times they just want to hear that. A lot of times they just want to know that someone cares. I have gotten through more phone calls with people by letting them know that we are trying to do the same thing for their kids that they are. And a lot of times. That may remind them what we're all trying to do, but it's just, you know, I'm I'm not bothering you. I'm calling you because we all want your kids here. We all want them educated. We all want them. To be successful in life. I want that. You want that. It tends to to get a good flow going. Um, working with local businesses to accentuate the importance of attendance. If any of you have gone through Tim Hortons, you probably saw one of my signs. Um. I had to actually go to the code office of the city to be able to. Stick that in the ground there. It's still up. Last time I went through anyway, it was still up and a little beaten, but. I was afraid that thing wouldn't last ten minutes and it's still, it's been there for a while. So. Uh, they are. A lot of them are in agreement with us that this is important and those are places that the kids are. And, you know, they show up here with some importance once in a while. So we're working with a lot of them to try and get the same message out. Our biggest struggles, we kind of added this today a little bit. Um. These are, they seem uncontrollable and frustrating at times. They are national issues. A lot of people say, well, Salome is unique and I completely agree. That doesn't mean that we don't have unique opportunities or something that another school system may not have. If you have the right people, looking at the right things and the right way with the right beliefs, the right understanding of the people that you're dealing with and their possible. Barriers. You're going to have a streamlined path, in my opinion. You can really make a difference. And I think that's what we're, what we're all learning them about us and us about them. Parent answering the phones, not answering the phones. And partnering with schools parental support and acceptance of student absenteeism. Mandatory attendance at school, sometimes making excuses. For their children, just being real. Here we have. Some kids that come in and their excuse is not valid. The next day they will have a different excuse hammered from a parent that. You know, changes the story a little bit. That's something. Uh, and talking to other schools, that is something that trying to be the parents to sign with the school. Uh, versus just make something else so that their uh kid doesn't get detention or something along those. I will bore you with numbers, but not for long. Uh, this is twenty twenty-three. Twenty-three or twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three and twenty-four over here. The numbers have improved. Slightly. Um, we're working on that. Increasing. You can see that in most cases they went down except. I'm I'm stunned at how stunned I keep hitting this button. For some reason, November is exactly the same. Um, but the rest of them, you can see there is a. A small downturn at the high school, which is good. Um, I was very interested to see these numbers because we've got an awful lot of illness this year. Uh, there's been a lot of COVID, a lot of flu, a lot of RSV. Um. We have um some kids out right now uh that are celebrating long hours. This is Seneca and there is a. One of the trends here that I was looking at. The absence went down, but the tardies went up. Which I think is also interesting. If we're going to change. This culture and the way that this happens, it's going to start at Prospect and Seneca, in my opinion. A lot of this, so the tardies going up is is something that I was interested to see. We we're going to start this at this level because there are better habits to bring it into. And this stunned me completely. September. Two forty-eight, one oh seven, two forty-eight and one oh seven. I don't know if that would ever be attainable or not. I think that's there. Um, I think we have a couple of videos that are on here. Do, does anybody have any? Questions for me right now? We are also doing some positive reinforcement uh for attendance buildings and recognizing, celebrating the students who have fewer than two absences in a quarter. We're doing breakfast February sixteenth. Uh, I believe you all got invitations. If not, spoiler alert, um we're inviting you to that breakfast. They uh, we'll see, but that's supposed to be something that, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to uplift and and pay attention to the kids that are doing that. Um, we give a large number of that. Um, kids that are also. So encouraging all students and families to value education with starters with daily attendance. First and foremost, we'd like to thank all of the students without standing. First and foremost, we'd like to thank all of the students without standing attendance. Your dedication to the school and your education is evident. We have said all along that attendance matters. The important habits that you have set. That your attendance will pay dividends down the road in your future employment. Some of the comments from our students, when asked why attendance is important are. So I can achieve my future goals. At the end of school, it's all worth it. Not link is power. Use it wisely. Being here every day helps improve my education, giving me opportunities that I'm grateful for. Because coming to school allows yourself to learn and grow as a person. Uh, the first one was the high school's attendance. Forty.
Because you can maybe start. So that is much because if. It all comes from, you're going to club your brain. I mean, I'm. Straight forward. Again, you can apply jobs and then you can, you know, build your own. Sports and. Better means like gets aware of the stuff and better attendance means better grades. And better grades means success.
Yeah, anything else? Do now. Okay, cool. Thank you. Same way there.
Because so.
Very eloquent answers. You can hear though that they're, they're, they get the idea, which is.
Were those the kids with perfect attendance or?
Uh, I don't want to, because the uh first, the first high school group was kids with thirty-nine, sixty-fourty-two. We also did. Two or fewer and the total of that was a hundred and five sets. Which I thought was great.
So you're noticing you're the the crime. It's the. Remember that eighty-twenty law? Where you have twenty percent of the families make no, and eighty percent of the. The numbers.
They're either up here or they're down here. There is um a middle, the middle ground is is a lot. Grayer and a lot of those kids are more the ones that were tending to see barriers that we might be able to be picking down. Um, yeah, there's a, there's a big gap between the very top and the very bottom. So we are still seeing that. Uh, those are going to be challenges to find out what the barriers are because their absenteeism is so high than what some of us. Um, I like. Hearing that they get the idea because I'm hoping that that will will spread a little bit, you know, that. Um, the human part of it, why, you know, why it means something to to them. We can get that to permeate a little bit and it can be coming toward everybody. That that will help. Again, that's that to me is it's ground level stuff, but that's that's these kids that we're talking to.
Do we um try to? Like you, I I agree with what you said about it starts with like Prospect and Seneca. I think it starts in Prospect. Even before. So do we try to push up like ourselves to? To kind of collaborate with them and try to say, hey, it's important that. You know, we're trying to build that whole, you need to be there. You can't miss. Environment. So when you get to school, what's the, you're starting right with pre-gay. You need to be here. You need to be there. You need to be there. Because when I, when we have our kids. Our kids learn and our kids become smarter. So. Uh, and to the core goal, how do you make our kids smarter? Uh, well, we start by getting them in school. That's how we make them smarter. And so. You know, if. And I'm not trying to take up some of the time, but uh. When I get on my soapbox, I used to kind of like this scale. Since we have a big crowd here, I say it a lot, but uh and I'm going to keep saying it. If there's things that we need to do to help. Make our kids smarter, whether it's more staff, uh whether it's more liaisons. Um, if there's families that need help, um we're here to help them so that the kids do become successful. If you have ideas on. How. You know, how to get this done, how to accomplish it, you know, that's what we're here for. We want to hear your ideas. Whether it's a student, whether it's an administrator, whether it's a teacher, a coach, it doesn't matter. Brother, sister, parent, community member. Um, just like you said, it takes a village. And um, we're always here to embrace new ideas to get our kids to school so that they can learn. So. Again, whatever we need to do, we're here to try and help.
That that means a lot to have that kind of backing. That's not going to happen without it. So we really appreciate that. Uh, we've just um. Barb has just started to work with Prospect and we're going to find out what we can do there to get this. Right from the ground up and uh. It it won't take long. I don't think we're starting to see the patterns and um a lot of the kids that come to high school have kids or have siblings at Prospect and Seneca too. Um, so a lot of this will um. By osmosis will be a. A plus. We're, we're working with all kids, all levels. Doesn't matter what the issues are. Nobody. Uh, nobody gets left out. We're looking at absolutely everything. We'll see what we can do to get. Get kids here and.
Yeah, great. They got you to turn around, grab one too.
You can learn more. And if you're not at school, people that you're absent, then your friends will probably get sad you're not at school.
Where you can learn and most of.
At the glossy school. At the morning time.
At the morning time, yeah. What are you doing at school?
I'm listening. Yes, I.
Listening. You're done. Very good job.
Learn and. They to be better.
Because we have to wake up, go to school because uh we grow our brain. So you can. So we can learn and get smarter. I think because. You learn. And you learn new, you learn new things. When you get older, you'll know what to do and. And you won't struggle because you're learning in school.
Because if you didn't go to school, you wouldn't learn. Because you can learn. Because if you don't go to. School and. Um, you need to learn here and then if you go to college, um you will get a bad grade.
Because we learn everything.
We win.
I learned stuff too.
When it's free time, you can learn.
Because you get to learn a lot of stuff. So when you get older, you can really start. Anything to be a child.
Well, again, thank you for your support. Uh, we continue to work toward your your goal. Um, we're going to keep little snappy slogans like eighty percent of success is just showing up. They're all truthful though. Everything that can be broken down, it's very simple. Show up and. Anything else I can answer? Yeah, I got, I got something I was just thinking about as I looked at these numbers. Can I borrow your soapbox? So I can get on TV with soapbox here and talk about some. Looking at these numbers like it makes it real. You know, we see all the tardies, the absences and the computers acting up.
You've mentioned like, what was the spoiler? We're going to do a recognition breakfast for what?
Yeah, the um or the perfect attendance of the kids with two or fewer. Uh, absences.
Is that for the year, for the quarter or the uh first half? So first half for the first.
But we're inviting the board to come and that was the spoiler.
But I I like that idea and I like this encouragement and then let's call it an incentive for being at school. The reason why I said I wanted to get on the soapbox is because I think we, I think we all as a board, as an administration, missed a huge opportunity a couple of years ago. We had a student who had perfect attendance for an entire career. We had a student who had perfect attendance for his entire career. And I don't think we recognized it enough, thirteen years, perfect attendance. One student. I don't know that it was ever done before and who knows if it'll ever be done again, but or before, so that would number two? Or at least, well, you know, yeah. But see, but that doesn't come around that often, and it's pretty huge, and I, like I said, I think we all missed a better opportunity to recognize that student. But when we're talking about this, you're talking about every six months, we're gonna recognize these kids. Maybe every, the whole year of the perfect attendance, maybe we range it all into if you have perfect attendance through Prospect, where it should start. Then you have recognition, if you had perfect attendance all through Prospect, all through Seneca.
So graded by grade too, if you put a grade against another grade, they will police themselves and they'll start saying, you know, don't be absent tomorrow, we gotta be eighth grade at the whatever, or class by class. You know, whatever it is that works and, and whatever it takes, and there's all kinds of ideas I would love to try, all of them, and this way they when we make the announcement and tell that there are these kids that are under that often, even the kids that might be on the fringe might strive a little bit harder to try and get past that threshold and, and get the recognition, get the recognition, you know. Uh, that's, it, like I said, it takes a village and, and um, it's, we're gonna find out what, what works the best, but yeah, absolutely. Perfect attendance is not easy, especially, like you said, for a vaccine, I can't imagine.
I couldn't either. But even the tardies though, like the tardies, and I see the stats. The tardies are going up, but the attendance is going down, at least they hit the effort and they're getting here. And like you said, eighty percent of success is showing up, so we'll move it in the right direction, but we could probably always need more. And I think that's something that we need to look at, what else can we do?
I think too, it's, it's great to recognize the kids that are making the perfect attendance, but what are we doing for the ones that, hey, they started missing here? And now they're down to here, so throughout the year, they've improved their attendance by twenty-five percent, I think, whatever. You know, what are we doing to help celebrate them too, because now you're making the effort and yeah, maybe not at the beginning of the year or halfway through the year. Maybe you're struggling, but you're getting better and you wanna recognize that too.
We did discuss that with the principal, some most approved or you, you know, whatever, you know, whatever happens to to work, somebody that has gotten it and has adapted it and improved upon it.
Incentives work. That's how we're all gonna be at the next board meeting, we heard there's gonna be cake, so we'll all be here.
Apparently I'm making cake.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, nice job, Steve.
All right, Janet, do we have any communications? Okay. We see Aaron's on, do we have anything from the federal six that you wanna share?
Hey guys. Uh, no, nothing pressing for Title VI tonight, um, sorry I couldn't be there with you guys, um. But next, um, Indigenous Parent Committee or Parent slash Family Committee, um, is going to be on the fourteenth of next month, so hopefully someone can make it out, um, we're turning those things out once a month, real good attendance and really productive, so everything's on track for, for Title VI.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to Central Office Message, and then we talked to Dr. Frontal earlier, do you have anything else you'd like to share? We can't hear you right now, well. I'm not left reading.
Would you do me by carol?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Uh, I wanna first thank you for, um, allowing the instructional coaches and our, um, attendance officer team to talk about the things that they've been working so hard doing, we think it's, um, it's important, um, this work is ongoing and, um, I couldn't stress more, I'm like, our board is so supportive, let's, uh, do a good job showing them just all those detailed things that we're doing on a daily basis and, um, I'm really thankful to work with all of them and, um, I just wanna thank them for doing a great job and explaining what they do for everybody every day. Um, I also wanna welcome, I hear there's a big, uh, group there today, wanna welcome students and families and staff. Glad to see everyone is back since our snow day, I know Mr. John is certainly happy that we finally had a nice dusting. Um, and I just wanted to share just a couple of things, um. Working with Dr. Beeler, um, I have to say that, um, I've been in a few different school districts and he's a superintendent that's hands-on, he's in the field, he's in the schools. And, um, that's the kind of, um, Assistant Superintendent I wanna be as well, I enjoy that. And, um, connecting with our people helps me to understand what's going on, how I can support them. And, uh, the end result is always, uh, great stuff to offer our children. One of those, uh, gems that we have is, uh, Dr. Graham Hayes. Um, I have attended, uh, his Thursday afternoon cooking under pressure. He, uh, invites students to come and, uh, cook with a pressure cooker. It is low cost, he uses only Whole Foods and, um, these students, um, the first time I went, they, uh, were, were kinda waiting for me, they invited me for the end result. And I said, no, I wanna come for the cooking part. So, um, the first time I came, I felt like I was like a queen being waited on, they were so polite. They set the table, they poured me a glass of milk, they got me my food. And I thanked them all and then they were all really, um, so responsible to ask Dr. um, Hayes about, uh, a bus pass because they all went home responsibly, um, either by bus or being picked up. Uh, so that, the whole process went really smoothly. Um, I also wanted to share that, um, he is also working on what he calls, um, the Road Roughness Project. And he is collecting data on tablets, it's student-driven on our buses. And, um, everybody is joining in, um, tech has joined in to help him out with smooth data collection, students are helping. And he said that he would be happy to share the results of the Road Roughness Project, um, at a future Board of Education date. So that's one of the things that I've been doing, um, making appointments to visit, um, some good stuff that's going on in the district and, like I said, seeing what they need, being present, and they were really happy to see that um, at a district level, we're interested in what they're doing, because we really are. Um, continued work with our attendance officers, they told you the story, Mr. Brundage told you the story today. We just keep working under the foundational work of Kristin Dudek. We just keep, um, tweaking and tweaking and finding better and better ways to get our kids to school. Um, continued collaborative work with the principals on our MTSS, our multi-tiered system of supports to have district-wide consistency and what, um, what processes we have in place that are effective and which ones that we would like to streamline. Um, we have worked on our preparation for our CBT, our computer-based testing coming up, and we're actually going to participate in a field test on Friday in the area of math. Um, and I also wanna share that, um, one special requisition that I approved was for, um, our maple boiling event that our Native American curriculum team, um, is working on. And they have graciously used all their own personal equipment in the, before. And now, uh, we've, uh, purchased equipment for them, for this maple boiling event, so they could use it every year, so we're really excited for May fourteenth. Um, and that's about it.
Thank you, thank you for the update.
Sure.
All right, so we'll move on to our board message, let's start with Christian.
Thank you, you're right, um, first off, I just wanna say, uh, jargon to the, um, the TLC instructional coaches and uh, Mr. Brundage on your presentations, both of which were very informative and educational, and I can't help but think how fortunate we are as a district, how, how fortunate all you students are to have such good resources and so many people behind you to support you, to give you the tools to be successful. Um, and, uh, yeah, one thing I wanna touch on with Mr. Brundage's, um, uh, presentation, if you're one of the students or one of the families or somebody out there, or you know somebody that's struggling, it's not too late to, to turn it around, to, you know, to start showing up, to get to school, you know, on time and do a good job. And obviously, you've seen some of the resources that we're all here to help you, um, you know, I know what it's like to struggle. Get up, you know, meet up, call, ask, we're all here to help you, so that's brilliant, thank you.
Thanks, Christian. Tracy?
Um, I wanted to say thank you to the instructional coaches for the awesome presentation and all the information they gave us. Um, also to Mr. Brundage on the attendance. Um, I see there's a lot of students here, they, um, shared all the information as well, so we all know that the attendance rate is going to go down, or up, I guess you'd say. Um. And I guess that's it.
Ken?
Uh, yeah, along with this, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Teachers, students, um, admin, uh, people online, the, uh, it's nice to see a, a full room, or a close to a full room anyway. The, um, but it was just the, the presentations today, just wanted to thank you guys for doing that, I mean, the they followed two of like the big board goals in terms of things, and it's really nice to see how on both presentations, there's a lot of things on how we're looking at the problems and then trying to fix them through a lot of proactive measures. Um, stats, data are one thing, but then there's other ways to try to bring education at, you know, the students not being here forward and, uh, working together, as we said, the community, school, family, um, really hits home on how that can be accomplished and break it down. And I just wanted to thank everybody that's involved in that, and everybody in the school itself, um, just in the end, just to get, get you to make it smarter.
I'm gonna congratulate all the students with perfect attendance. And I also wanna applaud the instructional coaches, it's not easy working in support roles, cause most adults feel like it's a weakness, ask for help. I wish some people were actually a strength, so I can appreciate that.
Harry?
You're doing all right? I just know it's over there. Um, I'll keep it short. Thank you to all of our staff as always, you guys are doing an amazing job helping our kids, working with the kids, um, getting them to school. I know, I know a lot of the people who have a big hand in getting their kids to school aren't actually here at a meeting, but I thank them as well, it's, it's showing, those numbers, it's showing, our kids are getting here. We can't make them smarter unless they're here, so I appreciate everybody and what you guys are doing. Um, also, I, I was informed a couple of weeks ago at the board meeting that we were talking about sports and whatnot, but I didn't give a shout out to our lady B-ballers for the excellent season that they're having this year, I believe right now, eleven and two on the season. So just a shout out to one of our sports teams, girls' basketball, so that's all I got today.
I, I just like to say, thank you again to the presenters, um, you know, we talk about attendance and it's important for the, the students, but it starts at the top and works its way down, uh, with our administrators, with our teachers, with our coaching staff, with our board members, I, I think it's important that, and even with our parents, you know. If we see that the students are struggling with attendance, you know, do we need to help parents, do we need to help guardians, do we need to help our community as a whole, um, and that's what we're here for, so again, we wanna be here to help support however we need to. Uh, and if that means our staff needs help, you know, we're gonna help our staff too, because when our staff is here, uh, it filters down to help make our kids smarter also, so um, when we, we talk about attendance, it's not just our kids, it's everybody, right? Everybody's gotta be here to, to make everybody smarter, so I, I just wanna say, again, if you need help in an area, don't be afraid to reach out, because that's what we're here for, is to help and support everybody, it's not necessarily that you're gonna get punished, but if you need help, ask and say something. Um, and I think that's probably really all I have.
Just a couple of quick notes, um, you know, we're at the midway, yeah, point of the academic year. You saw two presentations this, um, evening and moving forward for all of our board meetings, there will be at least one presentation that addresses our current action steps and our status, um, in meeting one of the four board goals that we have through the year, so now that we've sort of settled into the year, it's time to start evaluating our progress and communicating what we're doing. And I just wanted to take a note, because for the two presentations that we saw today, um, the tone of those reflects the tone that we have taken um, toward professional development and toward attendance, and that starts with the board and you've heard all of our board members talking about ways that they can provide support. Um, there, there's two different angles or approaches that you can take to helping a teacher improve. You can tell them things that they're doing wrong, you can tell them where to go to improve it. Or you can provide resources and support to do it with them and model it and help them work through their journey of professional development, and that's the approach that we've taken with the board, support of the board. There's also something that I, I think most of us saw in the attendance presentation, which was all of the conversations about working with the community. Building relationships with the families, finding out what the barriers are to success to help the students get here on time and, and just be present. What you didn't hear was what you will hear at most other districts, which is here's our plan, if you are late twice, you get a detention, if you're late four times, you get an extended detention, maybe you get suspended. If you're absent three times, this is the consequence. That is not the approach that we take here, we know historically that that has not worked. Our goal is to provide support and encourage our students to be here, because when they want to be here, they will be here. Uh, so I, I really just wanna point that out, because I think that that's very important and reflective of the tone that the board has set as a supportive organization. The other thing that I just wanted to announce, because information will be coming out, um, April eighth, we are in the very fortunate geographic location to be witness to a full solar eclipse, uh, that is something that is for most of us, and we don't travel around the world to follow it. It's sort of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Um, there are a couple of different ways that we could approach this at school districts, some school districts are taking the day off. And it's a day off and go sit in your backyard and watch it, I guess, um, we are taking a different approach. We will be celebrating the historical and cultural context of solar eclipses. Um, the whole day will be centered around providing a opportunity for our students to teach other students and teach community members um, all about the sun, and really it's a celebration of the sun itself, it's like a Sunday. Uh, so there, in fact, there are a lot of questions that people ask about solar eclipses. My youngest son, Mom Matthew, the other day, he said to me, hey dad, can you explain to me what a solar eclipse is? And I just looked at him and I said, no, son. I just gotta get that out of spawn. Got it, all right, so, um, much more information, Helen, you can write that one down if you want. The, there will be much more information, we are excited about this, we have had several meetings over the past couple of months to get things, uh, organized, but um, the only thing that can deter us is rain on that day, because we're really looking forward to taking advantage of this real-world educational opportunity that is literally in our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we have to worry about Dr. Beeler losing his beige app and going off to a meeting. All right. We are gonna move on to the concerned agenda. So we need a motion to approve the concerned agenda. All right. So we have a motion by Ted, second by Tracy, are there any questions on the concerned agenda?
Just one. Um, for John's travel, John Haley's travels. I mean, you're, uh, owing to twenty-five. There's another school year, is that normal? What we do?
That's the next one.
All right, sorry. All right, well, it's still under consent agenda.
Eight through eight, how about a five?
I'll, I'll hold my question.
So we got a motion from Ted, second by Tracy, from item eight three, is there any question about that?
You took it back?
All in favor? I oppose abstain, motion carried. All in favor, I oppose abstaining motion, Gary. Item F is conference for John Haley. Motion by Harry, second by Christian, are there any questions?
So is it, is it normal, we're into another school year for this travel? Is that typical?
It is not typical, um, the reason this is come together is because one foundation, um, that has been sort of a, awarded to him, so that's why you see these dates extended, uh, past the academic year, typically we don't do that. I think it, we, it has been included here so that we understand that this is a multi-year, um, sort of commitment that he's taking on. Uh, so, you're right, it is not unusual, um, but I do believe that it's appropriate because it is one multi-year for project.
Pretty much a good honor for him to be there. Do we have any other questions? Then we have a motion by Carrie, second by Christian, all in favor, opposed, abstaining motion, Carrie. We have no old business, new business, uh, we have. Uh, our donation from, uh, the VFW, uh, so the VFW made a hundred dollar donation for the eighth grade Washington V three trip, so we need a motion to approve that donation. Motion by Ted, second by Brad, are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose abstain, abstain motion, Carrie. And item B, we are declaring surplus, um, books, like, sound programs. Musical instruments, so we need a motion to approve all the items listed above as surplus. Motion by Tracy, second by Christian, second by Christian, are there any questions?
Just one general question, when it goes surplus, what actually ends up with all that stuff, like, where's it go?
Sure, so, um, there's a couple of different venues that they go to, so typically for books like this, once they're taken off of our, uh, the board asks to turn them into surplus, uh, we will contact the used book company. Uh, they will come in, or they'll just simply, we'll send them the ISBN numbers, see if there's a resale value for them. Um, and then they will take whatever they can and the funds go back to our general fund. Some of these books, for example, you know, Microsoft Excel two thousand and seven, I have to believe there's a lot's happened since two thousand and seven, so uh, there's not likely to be a residual value on those. Most of the time, we will then provide them to students if they're interested in taking them, otherwise, they simply get recycled. Um, other items like instruments, uh, depending upon the nature of those, uh, we have recently started using a auction site for, that most public domains use for, um, Auction International. Uh, so for example, that's where our buses went the last go-around, and any items that we know have a residual value to them will be put up on there. Uh, and then auctioned off.
So we got a motion by Tracy, second by Christian, all in favor, I oppose abstaining motion, Carrie. Item C is our BOSI's part of their purchasing agreement with, um, school districts and county. We need a motion to approve, uh, the resolution to. Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Tracy, are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose, same motion, Carrie. Item D is our change orders and allowance distribution, so we have a change order for forty-two thousand credit for, and I'll keep coming in mechanical, and then an additional perfect electric for three thousand two forty-two. So we need a motion to approve the change order and allow.
Motion.
Motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Ted, are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose, abstaining motion, Carrie. Item E is our new, we use of our reserve funding, so we are using, uh, our equipment or moving money into our equipment replacement of six hundred and eighty-two thousand eighty dollars, taking it from our technology replacement fund. So we need a motion to approve, uh, the resolution of using the reserve fund. Motion by Carrie, second by Christian, are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose, abstain, motion, Carrie. Item A is our MOA with cell maker rehabilitation and nursing, uh, and this is for January seventeenth of twenty twenty-fourth January seventeenth of twenty twenty-seven, so we need a motion to approve that MOA.
Motion.
Sorry, motion by Tracy, second by Carrie, are there any questions? All in favor?
Uh, Glenn Haley, just give us a quick rundown. Sure, um, previously prior to COVID, we had a agreement with the nursing home to be a sheltering site. Should there be an incident that would cause them to have to be relocated, um, we haven't done this in the past few years, but we recognized, uh, I think that they pointed out to us. That they pointed out, they reached out and said, you know, um, part of their review of their health and safety plan indicated that they needed to have essentially an off-site evacuation, uh, location, um, and that is historically been our building, and we will continue to provide that service. Hopefully, they won't be.
Then we have a motion by Tracy, second by Carrie, all in favor, I oppose, abstain, motion, Carrie. Item eight A is our personal agenda. Item B, we need a motion to approve, eight A. Motion and Christian, Ted, motion by Ted, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose, abstain, motion, Carrie, do we have anybody here?
I am just looking to see, I'm checking my billing books.
Yeah, we're delighted to, to offer tenure to Mr. Hindman, Joe's been a wonderful addition to our district. Um, and excelled in his position as the one-on-one with our students, and, um, also as a coach, is recognized to Mr. John's statement earlier. Um, Joe has a knack for developing meaningful relationships, not only with our students, but with our staff, and is flexible and willing to assist where needed, um, and Steph enjoys him, uh, and I'm a young man that we enjoy having.
We have anyone else, I, alright, this is.
Um, we have Jen Reed on Zoom, and it is my pleasure to recommend Jen Reed for ten years. She is one, she is, um, she is one of our pre-K teachers at Prospect Elementary. Um, and I, I think one of the, one, one thing that really resonates with me about Jen is that she will, she says she's honored to do this work, um, and that's evident in every interaction. If you walk into her classroom and you feel that sense of love, and that's the, the community that she fulfills in her classroom, which doesn't come easy to a room of twenty-four-year-olds. Uh, but she, you know, she develops those skills within the kids as well, so if you walk in and they, you know, they kindly greet everybody, visitors to the classroom, um, they work on social skills and, um, in everything that comes with working with young learners, all while teaching them foundational skills of literacy and math, so how to function in that environment, but also keeping the lens on academics, but she does it with such grace and patience. Um, and she also is a valued member of the team, so we, um, have a growing team, and not only on our pre-K team that they value her experience and expertise, because prior to coming to Salem, I should have started with that. Um, she was the lead teacher at, uh, Head Start for ten of us, um, joined us as the teaching assistant, and then along with the role of one of our pre-K teachers. Um, but she's a, a valued member of the team, she really, um, respects growing strong partnerships with families from the start of their educational journey. Um, and that goes beyond pre-K, so you'll see her at any family engagement event, um, that we have, pre-K and throughout the building, and she's always willing to jump in, to jump in and, um, and to help out and to, and to see all of her, her family, she's had a lot of students that are now in the older grades, so they always go up to her, they remember her, she was the start of the journey, so I can, I can't say enough about Jen, she's, she's an amazing part of our team, so congratulations to you, Jen.
Uh, I also just have a couple of other folks, uh, we have Leora White here, who is, um, continuing on her contract with us through the My Brothers Keeper Grant, so, good to see you. Um, I believe we have Kyle, um, Wade, who, I think that's probably Kyle W. online, who has been essentially elevated, um, I wouldn't say elevated, he has achieved the status of bus driver from monitor, he's gone through uh, some of our training programs, so he's being appointed tonight, congratulations, Kyle. Um, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mr. John, who is being appointed as a volunteer, uh, cross-coach, so thank you, no, seriously, thank you for your time, cuz that's, in addition to the time you put in here, that's a lot uh, of extra time, and you make a significant difference to that program, thank you.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Talk about bad news?
Oh, well, he's not here, I know, so, um, we are acknowledging and accepting the retirement, um, of Mr. Seaver this evening. Um, we will ensure that he gets the appropriate recognition when we see him. Um, if I know him, he might be weeping and, uh, didn't, uh, want to come to tonight's meeting, but, um, uh, it is going to be a very significant, um, gap that we need to fill, and uh, he has had many years of service to our district, uh, and has had an impact on quite literally tens of thousands of Salem Mayor residents, uh, so, when he's here and he can listen to me go on and on, I will make sure that I, uh, speak appropriately.
Okay. Next, we're gonna move on to our board information and report, so we have our Indigenous Education Meeting Minutes. Uh, our upcoming event, uh, we do have a board, a special board meeting on the thirty-first. Uh, and our next board meeting will be the thirteenth, right here, at five-thirty. Now, we have our Indigenous Education Committee meeting on the fourteenth, here, at four-thirty. And then, uh, what all students are looking forward to is break from the nineteenth to the twenty-third, so for that, I am going to ask for. Carrie and Christian, all in favor?
I.
Oppose, saying, motion, Carrie, thank you, everybody, for coming.